Good evening, and I'd like to call our Harris County Board of Commissioners and make the order on a statement on July 20th, 2021. Commissioner Andrew R. Sorensen, thank you.
That's right. Dear honorable Father, thank you for your many blessings. We thank you, Lord, for the sunshine and we thank you for the rain. We pray that you would touch each of our minds and our hearts as we make decisions for the county. And thank you for this beautiful place we live. And we pray that you would help us to keep it moving in the right direction. And we pray that you would bless each one of us and bless all of our employees in the citizens of this county. In Christ's name, we pray.
Please join us for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening are the approval of the minutes for our regular session of June 15th, 2021, and for our joint UDC meeting of June 29th, 2021. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve both.
Is there a second?
I'll second to approve both.
Any discussion? Any ballots in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is the appearance of a citizen and Mr. Bo Barber from Old West Point Road. Is there a approval?
Yes, sir, and I would like to... First of all, I'd like to thank the commission for the opportunity to come and pray before you. It's not just me, it's an entire community of us. We're on the north end. We are proud citizens of the northern part of Harris County. Many of us have been there for at least six generations. So, this evening though, I want to first give some kudos to our commissioner, Ron Grant. He's done a really good job for us as far as he can because we know that he is one voice among voices. But he works really hard for us and we're grateful for that. And also, I'd like to say hello to my friend Ms. Langston. She represents the district where the church that I pastor resides. And we are grateful for her and everything that she has done. Not to take up a lot of your time this evening, and we understand that some of the issue has been resolved at this point. It is really a symptom of a bigger problem versus the cause. A few weeks ago, approximately six weeks ago to be specific, the city of West Point took on the project of receiving field dirt from a DOT project there in West Point. Originally, the trucks were moving from the site through city streets and so forth. Without the greater consent of the city council is our understanding, or at least that's the way the city manager and the mayor explained it to us, and council member had those trucks rerouted within about a week or so of the activity. Well, that may have been great for the city of West Point and some of the neighborhoods there, but for our community, it was, to say the least, detrimental. Six days a week, those trucks drove through our area, at least forty trucks a day, from almost sunup to sundown, from Monday to Saturday without letting up. The only break we got was when the rain came and then the dirt would be moved. Now, that said, it was not just the inconvenience of the noise and all of the disruption, but it was also a safety issue. And the biggest of the safety issues was associated with the speed and those trucks were moved up and down that very narrow county road. There was no management of traffic by the city, which I understand, this is a county road, they have no jurisdiction, quote unquote, as a police force in that area. However, the city is always quick to say to us that there are these special relationships between the sheriff's department and the city. Well, it didn't show up this time. And we pointed that out to them and we're saying, we're not looking for you to issue tickets, we're just looking for a presence. Our sheriff's department here in Harris County is stretched. We know that this is a very large county, even as you compare it to other counties in the state. And so the resources are not there. We get that. But we did contact our sheriff's department, they came up, they did what they could for about a day, but then they had to go to the rest of the county. The safety issue was never addressed. Then we have the issue of the material as the trucks come out into the road spilling onto the roadways. Well, that was never cleaned up. The city should have, in my opinion and good faith, had some kind of way of cleaning up their mess, for lack of a better phrase, you know, after their work and stuff. And that never happened. Up until last week, when the last truck came through and the rain started, there was a mud slip there that could have caused some really bad accidents. Just full disclosure, our road and the road that connects Highway 103 where some of the residents that you see here this evening live, we all live in the same area, we consider ourselves one community. That road is used by the industrial park as a shortcut, if you will, to get back into the city of West Point or make it to Alabama. Now, with all the money that was spent on the state road, we would think that that would be much, you know, that would be enough. But because West Point law enforcement is further down within their city limit, they use our road as a dodge, okay, just to be honest. So you have the traffic that is, what has become our new normal, plus industrial-sized dump trucks coming through there, plus problems and hazards on the roadway, it's a recipe for disaster. My own mother was, she was coming out of her driveway in her car and one of those trucks zoomed by and it almost got the car because it was moving too fast. Okay, we all walk to our mailboxes. There is a danger of that, of an accident, even without dump trucks. But to stay on task, we have those issues. And then, what is the most, I think, egregious for me is that the city decides to use the county resources and the county infrastructure without investing in the county. They use our roadways, they use our bridges. We found the damage, there are reflectors that are missing. Why? Because those heavy-duty trucks were coming through. I meant to bring them with me. But, you know, we pick them up on the side of the road, we find all kind of debris. We pick up our own garbage on the side of the road, on that road because the traffic has increased to the point, people who do not live in the community, they have no regard for the beauty of our county. They don't even, most of them are out of Alabama and some out of the city of West Point. But they really don't have any, but we do. And so to help relieve some of the pressure off of our county infrastructure, these people that are behind me and myself, we pick up garbage beside the road, we mow the roadway. We do that because we know that the resources are stretched. All we're asking this evening is that the commissioners' council would consider looking at ways to give us some relief on the north end of the county. We've tried to address the city. Even though those trucks are no longer running, that's just the latest of the issues that we face. There will be other projects. In fact, we know that there are other projects coming down the pipe. City of West Point is about to undergo a major road construction by putting in roundabouts. People are going to come through that, this Old West Point Road, down 103 like they never have before because they will want to avoid that construction. Also, we know that there are other projects that the city is undergoing, and I'm not going to bring them up because I know that's not the topic of discussion right now, but they're hap... And rather than find ourselves just mowed over and beaten down and trying to come to you, again, at another one of your meetings, when, after the genie's already out of the bottle, we as a community, and just because there's acreage between us, that doesn't mean that we're not a community. We as a community come to you asking if you would please look for ways to help us on the north end. I know that there is a lot of planning that goes into trying to make the county more manageable. There's a lot of industrial work that's coming up there, the industrial park is a great place for jobs, but maybe some of the unforeseen issues, people are actually moving. And we got to make the construction of houses coming all up 103. And what we might have intended to have most of the residential on one side of the county and the industry on another side is probably not going to turn out that way. It's probably people don't want to be closer to the jobs. And so there's going to be more building and there's going to be more people moving in. And they're going to want to be able to go out in their backyard and have a barbecue. They're going to want their kids to be able to, you know, go out in the front yard and play. They're going to choose roads like Old West Point Road to live on because it is a quiet and good place. The only place that I can say it is akin to is like driving through Lick Skillet. If you drive through Lick Skillet, then you're driving through Old West Point Road. It's very much like that without the buildup yet. So, all of these people behind me, they take pride in their homes, they take pride in their community. We try to look out for each other. And we're just asking that as citizens of the county, and we made clear to the city of West Point, even though some of us have been annexed in, which is another problem, because we have this postage stamp of annexation whenever it's something that the county, that the city wants, they're just annexed in. We made clear to them that we are county people, we're county vote. But we also need for the county to look out for us. And so without prolonging the time, that's basically why we came tonight. And we'll ask that if you will, please, please look at ways to help the sheriff's department, maybe have a more of a presence in our area. See what we can do with maybe even automated speed control. You know, if we could put some automated speed control in that area where it's one of those, even if they don't issue tickets, if it would just flash and... And, you know, sometimes all you need is a deterrent, you know, you don't have to think you're going to go to jail. But if we could do some things like that. And the last is the mowers, I know they do the best they can. We were getting a lot of rain, but we can't even see out of the rails on our bridges on that road. I mean, we have an overabundance of deer. And they use that as their private little, you know, jogging station. And they'll come out almost anytime they want, but we can't even see because the vegetation has grown to the point that we just can't see over it. So again, we thank you, I thank you. And if you have any questions, I guess we will try to answer them or I'll try to sweep all those people.
I have a question. We're looking at some programs where citizens will request speed tables. Would this be a situation where a speed table here, there, and there would deter those trucks, the speeding through there, or that kind of thing? Do you think the speed table would assist in that, or is it just too much of a...
Well, forgive me for, help me with the definition of a speed table, so I make sure that I understand.
Speed, it's a speed bump, but why?
Ah, I see what you're saying. I think that it would be a good deterrent. I think it would. I don't think that the area is so vast that it wouldn't make a difference. Old West Point Road is fairly short, okay, it's not a long road. But leading into Old West Point Road, we have Highway 103. Fortunately, Highway 103 has been improved greatly. I mean, it is a great roadway. I think if we had that type of deterrent, that it could help. I do. But I would add that if you could include in that project some type of automated speed control or, for lack of a better term, I think that that would even make it even more potent in dealing with the problems. Yes, ma'am?
I can say that I was talking with Mr. Barber out of Newberstown. I have helped them try to get up the speed limit signs down there that were faded. We've worked, I've worked together with them, trying to do what we could do. And I rode West Point Road, Old West Point Road, I believe it was Sunday, and he's correct about the vegetation being on the bridge. I just have not had the opportunity to get into the commission to talk to our county manager, our county clerk, to see if we can't get the footwork out there. So if one of y'all could talk to them, that would be great. Appreciate it. I don't know if the speed tables might, would work. They might. We did have the sheriff's department come out there and put their automated speed limit thing out there for about a day or two, but then they had to move it to someone else because I don't think we own but about one. I have had the sheriff deputies come and sit, but they can't just sit as long as we would need them to. So, I asked Mr. Barber if he would be willing to come up here and speak tonight to let y'all know the conversations he and I have been having because I'm kind of at an impasse. I'm not sure what more I can do to help him. And I felt like if I could get some more, you know, better brains in mind to help me try to help our citizens. You know, I know it's my district and I live out, I live not very far from them. But if there's something, you know, any ideas about the speed tables, I've been thinking about the speed tables. That's one reason I wanted him to come and speak so that y'all could also hear what Mr. Barber and I have been talking about and dealing with the last, I guess, two and a half, three years since I've been in the community.
G-DOT placed speed tables at 219 and 315. And they may be out of what they're willing to do, but they did place some speed tables, say, on 315 and 219.
Randy, have you had any conversations with the city of West Point about this?
Briefly, I talked to the city manager recently, and the dump trucks have all that probably have been included. So they're beating the work dump trucks.
They're not clean in the right way.
There was a discussion with the...
The bridges, is that, is that bridge in here in the county, the dog bridge or something?
They are, they are. There are two bridges, well, technically, there are two bridges and an overpass on that road. And, you know, I don't want it to be mistaken that we are somehow obstructionist. We're not. We're not trying to say, you know, cause the wheels of progress come to a grinding halt because we don't want to be bothered. All we're asking is that people, and when I say people, specifically the city. And I've talked to the city manager, he's a nice guy, I have a good relationship with the mayor and with most of the city council members. But, you know, it's sad to say when you are, when you are not a large voting block for a group of people, there's very little deterrent, you know, for maybe, how can I say, being out of sight, out of mind. So that's why we come, we believe in our county and we believe in the officials. So we are hoping that y'all can do something. I'll just real quick, piggyback on what you said. If we can just, it'll be an inconvenience, I'm sure, for those speed tables. Or people will view it as an inconvenience that might travel the road. But we have a scout camp that is used for jamborees, that's used for carpentry gathering. There are children that, and for almost twenty, almost thirty years, my mom personally off of their property ran a large daycare center right there. The county approved a rezone to make this multiple use thirty years ago. If for no other reason, safety should be at top of our list.
Well, we don't have a speed table program at this point, but we have it on our agenda to review. And I have neighborhoods in my district that are begging for them. So I thought that might be something we could work on. And also, you know, our prison warden, she will take the team out to take care of that road, she and Mike Brown. But, you know, I'll call her and say, "Look, I got a bridge over here in Ellis Lake, it's a mess." And they'll get, I think they'll take care of that right away. But I appreciate you coming and sharing with us tonight. I think it would help with some of those things.
Will send the warden an email tomorrow morning?
Thanks for sharing our... We'll appreciate the time.
Thank you, it's good to see you.
You too, you too. At this point, should we, it's a question, we say, it's a decision.
Your choice, your choice.
Oh, yes, sir.
On that speed table, is that, is that down in the road?
Yes, ma'am.
Hollow, like props.
Now, would it be fortunate, the one like they used to have, when you said you had one?
And they're typically...
In the future, would it be given one where you could put over there like we used to have? And flash this one, maybe have it flash?
No, that's two, it's two different things. The speed table will actually be on the road like a speed bump.
Right.
Right? But now, I don't know about the flashing lights. That was on the speed limit sign that was there. Now, that's something we can look into also to see if we can't see what we can do with that. If we put a blinking light up there saying the speed limit's 45 and just lit the light, that might be something we can look into to see also.
Because just looking at, I mean, that would be more safer to me, I think, because that speed, that 45 miles an hour, it might cause a rear-end accident, I don't know.
It could. That's why the tables are wider, because the bumps will tear up your car. And that's happened at the high school more times than I'd like to talk about, and Bob Andrews also knows that. But that's why the speed table's a little bit wider and that helps you from tearing up your car, but it does slow you down. But that's some stuff that I'm sure our county manager and all can kind of look into and see what we can do out in that area. And it won't, and y'all, you don't have, it won't be disaffected if you leave. And we know a storm is coming, may come again. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is under new business. And this is the second reading of application of House One NPR for beer and wine off-precises at A and A Seastore, 1560 US Highway 47, Catala. The license applied for was for beer and wine off-precises. It doesn't meet qualifications. Recommendation from the sheriff's office and community development was approved. Health department did not have, was not applicable to the health department. And our applicant was not here tonight. Would anyone in the large audience wish tonight could comment on the statement and the sacrifice? None?
There was a virus to be here.
That was asked.
They always are.
Well, they were here at our first reading.
Yes, they were.
Yeah, they were. And they made a point of making sure that they were supposed to be here for this reading, so I don't know if the storm is out of effect or not. But I will say that we were here at the first reading.
And then we did change the first or last name.
Yeah, there was an extra, but y'all can move forward with whatever.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve this based on the recommendation of the sheriff's office of food development.
I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is under new business. And this is a resolution for CRRSA Act funding for airport in order for the county to receive $13,000 for the airport from the coronavirus response and relief supplement appropriation. A resolution authorization authorizing acceptance of the G-DOT contract for same-diss required. And a resolution has been prepared and is in our package. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution, Ron Grant, and accept the G-DOT contract for the CRRSA Act funding associated with the Harris County Airport.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And any further discussion? Ballots in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is for county manager, and this is going to cover courthouse renovations, phase one. Randy, if you want to provide us with this information?
Mr. Sheriff, we're, I'm going to see on the phone the... So you can hear the discussion and be able to ask any questions the board may have, if I can hear on the phone. Thank you, Alex, ready to be in Harris County. Okay, I'm in commission meeting and I'm wanting you to hear this presentation and hear any questions the board may have.
Absolutely.
Okay, just state, state to you. Can you give me your call?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the next item is courthouse renovation phase one, consisting of investigation, design, bidding, construction administration. The board authorized two WR architects to conduct a property condition assessment of the county courthouse during March of this year, and they did that for $25,000. The assessment was performed and the county received the final report in early May of this year. The final report indicated about $8 million in various repairs are needed, and they were done in a priority order. So, in the approved SPOLOs 2019 budget, the budget, that budget contains a little, almost $1.4 million to begin phase one of the courthouse renovation and repairs. Phase one generally consists of replace new roof of the entire building, the old and the new portion, investigate any ventilation issues, clean and paint all previously painted exterior surfaces, replace the storm windows on the historic portion of the building, repair the historic front balcony, repair the two front canopies, and investigate and repair the interior courtroom balconies. The cost of investigating design and bidding and construction administration of phase one is $80,250 and should be completed in four months or early November of this year. Once this project is designed, the project will be competitively bid out and awarded November or December of this year. The actual construction of all phase one items is estimated to be about $1.1 million. A contingency of $200,000 is included to cover reimbursable expenses and unforeseen expenses that will probably occur in a renovation of a historic structure. All county building permit fees will be waived since this is a county-funded project. The actual construction is estimated to take about five months to complete or June of next year. So, a motion and a vote is needed to approve the architect's proposal to do the design of phase one, bid it out, he will help us with bidding, and then award the construction contract to the most responsive bidder. So again, we are embarking on a year-long process, but this is the first part to do, is get the project design. And Alex Branks of Two W R is on the phone to answer any questions the board may have.
The ADA, 250, that's included, is your 1.1 in relation to that?
It's 1.1 plus, the whole project is 1.3 million. So the 1.1 million and the 200,000 is the 1.3. And ADA is inside there.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
And this is all SPOLOs dollars?
It is all SPOLOs, $19.
Do we think that based on the material costs, that this could go up if we don't try to use the SPOLOs dollars and get this done now? Or, I mean, I guess the question is, is it, if it's starting to come down, we probably don't need to wait, but it does.
About two by fours yesterday, around $3 and $20.
So it still costs 20?
No, it's going to lay something to find something. It's coming down slowly, but it has hit the retail.
And this would be phase one of a proposed five-phase, correct?
This will, this will only take care of the items on the last page, which is, this is phase one, 41 items only. Not 42, 4, 4, 5, 41 items only. And you can see on the last page what those typically are. Alex, do you think it's better to do it now than later due to construction prices and the volatility of those prices?
Randy, I wish I knew. When prices may come down, I know the government is looking into the supply chains, which we believe this was caused... which we believe this was causing the escalation of all prices. Eight months ago, we thought prices would have been down by now, and what I understand, they kind of leveled out. But I have no idea how safe when they may come down. If you wait, will they come down, or will they continue to go up? I, I just, I really don't know. These numbers are based on escalated numbers that we've seen going on, you know, the past couple of months. So, so we feel like this is an adequate budget for this work.
So with that being said, on escalated prices or the volatility of the market itself, it is a potential that this number could come down if we see a transition for that to come down, right? Randy, I'm not sure if there are questions?
Basically, well, basically, this will take about four months to design the project. And then we'll bid out in November, December, and probably get bids back in January. What will prices be at that time? Up, down, the same? Who, who knows?
Um, yes, I, I certainly don't. I don't know.
I think this is something that, I mean, you know, it's been discussed over a while with some of the things we can do, especially the phase one of this, of the courthouse. And we all know that, that, you know, we have some issues, which is why we had TWR come in and look at it. So I would like to make the motion that we do the courthouse renovation phase one, consisting of the investigation, design, bidding, construction administration.
So we have a motion, is there, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any appropriate discussion?
Because this is the SPOSS dollars that we put in the budget.
Yes.
A year or two ago specifically for this, correct?
Yes, and we, so the SPOSS nineteen budget is one point three for the whole six years. So we're using all the SPOSS twenty nineteen money allocated for this project, all at once. There's no more of the SPOSS that you're cutting. Excuse me.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll hear the question.
Thank you, Alex.
Great, thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is also for county manager, and this is the surplus property.
Mr. Chairman, board commissioners, this is, we do this like annually, or maybe just whenever we get a chance, to surplus some county vehicles that are all over a mini-use of county. We have five items right now that are no use of county, because they've been replaced by other newer equipment, an old ambulance, an old roll-off garbage truck, a bus for recreation to transport inmates, and two old garbage trucks. So actually, we're going to have the board declare those surplus items, declare the surplus, and authorize them to go through an online auction to dispose of them. And our vehicle maintenance director will take care of that and turn these unproductive assets into cash and get them off of the county's insurance rolls.
Any questions, Mr. Allen, please? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
The next item is the program work. This is the first time we've seen a new program of work, because it's a new fiscal year. Any hot points? Number two, replace chairs in the commission meeting room. We have three samples here. We're going to get the board's back a few on these three samples before we leave tonight. Number four, update, update Laney's development codes. That's going on, and that should be finished very, very soon. Number six, installing a health system for the prison, public works, and our CS office, facility maintenance, vehicle maintenance, and water works. That also is in progress. Number eight, replace the roof of the prison, preparing bids packs for that project. As the architects said, and what we're finding out, these, all these numbers were prepared in the budget, through the budget process last March and April. We're finding prices are escalating since March and April to today. So I would assume that number eight, one hundred and forty-five thousand, replace the roof of the prison. When we get the, when we get competitive bids, we believe that's going to be a lot higher. So just letting everybody know now. So, again, any hot points? Number eighteen, Alson Park, constructing that, developing that park is ongoing. We've ordered gates, signs, airanter for the lake. And we're in the process of getting the stores built to store all our equipment. So it's starting to, it's starting to build. A lot more than usual. Number twenty-two, phase four of the Mano War Road Recreation Trail. That's ongoing right now. It should be finished early December of this year. And right now, it's being paved from behind the Mountain Creek Inn to the country store in the renovation of the Bridge over twenty-seven. As you can see, the Bridge over twenty-seven, there'll be sand, water pipes brought out to get all the asbestos-based paint off of it.
And I'd like to speak on, you know, I had a meeting last Friday with the chamber members and some citizens in the, in the county, Pine Mountain, about trying to brand the trail so that we can get the word out that the trail is going to be now from a city to a city. We have a destination to a destination. And to promote the tourism, it also started as like a, almost like a trail system, because it's going to stop, it comes to store, you got Pine Mountain, Trail, those stuff. So we're at that point now where we can probably start advertising as the chamber can, not commissioner, that the trail, you know, how it's going to be. And I Googled Mano War Trail, and that's all I put in there. And the first thing that popped up was our kiosk that is at the trailhead of Pine Mountain. So that's a good thing. So we're, so we're really, we're trying to come down and get together with the chamber and everybody to see what we can do to brand this so that we can really make this trail something that we're all very proud of. And Randy was at that meeting. I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
I was made to go. Number, number twenty-three, phase four, or phase five of the Mano War Trail. That survey design will begin late, later this month. And that should be, should be completed in about eighteen months from now. Again, hitting hot points. Number forty-two, phase one of the courthouse renovations that was approved tonight to, to progress for that project. Number forty-three, county projects using the federal ARF funds of three point four billion. That is on the retreats agenda for discussion. Number forty-four, replacing the roof and the HVAC system at the old library for a new medical clinic. That project is progressing. Number forty-five, impact fee study, that, that project is also progressing. Number forty-eight is interesting. Relocate various county records to the old Carver School through an integral agreement with the Board of Education. The Board of Education, that was their commitment to the county if the Marshall Med Clinic would ever, you know, get off the ground and be finished. So the Board of Ed and the attorney are preparing an integral agreement between the county commissioner, the Board of Education, to use a lot of that old school space for record storage for county, community development, board commissioners, board of elections, Superior Court, DA, management court, all in a secured environment, climate controlled with surveillance. So that agreement will be brought to the board hopefully very soon, to begin maybe September first. And that will probably solve a vast majority of the county's records problem.
Well, you'll have to purchase some shelving and build some shelving or not?
We would buy some. Oh, no, 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 no. This would be, this would be what we call organized. No, they aren't going to be thrown out, no. They'll be, see, the whole purpose, our goal is to organize it better than what we have, put them in metal shelving, new metal shelving, as well as reuse the existing metal shelving that we have in various places. So maybe by Christmas, we can, if this agreement goes through, then mostly county records will be in this facility, under lock and key, climate controlled, surveillance, all in one place. And, and not spread all over the county. So it's a good thing. And so we're really looking forward to that. And the old, that old house on top of the deal up one sixteen where the gas company used to be, we want to empty that and demolish that house in some form or fashion soon. So that's part of the mission. And number, number fifty is quite interesting. Assistant Regional Commissioner with the Teach SPOSS continuation referendum that is scheduled for March of next year. And the county has submitted five order-proofed projects to the RVRC roundtable for consideration. I've not heard back from that yet. So we have, we have fifty-one projects that the boards saw fit to put in the budget with money attached to it. The value of all projects is over fourteen billion dollars for all these fifty-one projects. And there, and hopefully by, between now and next June thirty, it'll all be accomplished, just like the previous year. So far, we have accomplished one of them, but it's only in July. So, and if you look at the SPOSS and loss collection, they're staying steady as expected. We have one more month left in the fiscal year to be collected, and we are well, well over a hundred percent completion. And then, along with the Teach SPOSS, the building permits, last year we had two hundred and thirty-nine total permits, as compared to last year, two hundred and thirty-six, as compared, compared to the year before, two hundred and thirty-two. So it's staying pretty constant, at about two hundred and thirty single-family home building permits issued, except for the portion of Harris County that's in West Point. Those are also, that is also a busy area of building activity, and those buildings are not included in these totals. As you can see, a perennial favorite, the Sun West tonnage, a whole year has been collected. I think it's astonishing. The last several years have been about thirteen thousand tons collected. And that's been pretty constant over the last three or four years, bumped up to fourteen thousand tons. Then in one year, fifteen thousand, the next year seventeen, over seventeen thousand, and now eighteen thousand seven hundred tons. So you can tell tonnage is increasing at a high rate, which is indicative of housing being built, people buying things, having a lot of place. Do you have, answer any questions the board may have, any of yours?
I have a question, but that to, um, the items that we're talking about, the projects, number forty-nine, Howard Brand, writer, friend of Brad, who developed the old, that's Harris Business Park lot. The development authority, we can get ready, buddy, and then we'll see if we're able to get that. So we can get started, hopefully that we can submit for the October deadline.
Any other questions for Mr. Allen?
I, I do. Is there a reason, did I ask you about the, okay, okay, I don't know what to use. But is there a reason the financial state, though, that's not on the agenda? We, we may, uh, I would get a oversight on my pocket. All right. We will. And I had also asked for an executive session for the purpose of discussing litigation regarding that.
I, I would just say I actually have some items under litigation, personnel, and general estate. So I was inclined for executive session. It'd be a good time, huh?
I'll make the motion, we're going to executive session to discuss all things, our attorney did say we need to discuss.
Motion carries.